We have new microphones, too. Can we get a chair that doesn't? Shelby's down there now, huh? Hey.
He's in our control center.
Okay, everybody ready? Okay, I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the Carmel by the Sea Planning Commission to order. Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Alborn?
Here.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Kara Petkoff?
Commissioner Locke?
Here.
And Chair LaPage?
Here. Okay, everybody's here, that's nice. Okay, this first item on our agenda tonight is the public appearances. Any member of the public can speak to the Planning Commission on any matters which are under our jurisdiction and of municipal concern. I have to read you this little thing about the Brown Act. Public comments for matters on the public -- on the agenda must relate to the agenda item. To that agenda item, a public comment for matters that are not on the agenda must relate to the subject matter jurisdiction of this legislative body. Hateful, violent, and threatening speech is impermissible, public comment as it disrupts the conduct of the public meeting. This is a warning that if a member of the public attending this meeting remotely violates the Brown Act, by failing to comply with these requirements of the Brown Act, the Speaker will be muted. But having said that, I invite anybody at this time from the public that would like to make any comments about any item which is not on our agenda tonight to speak to the Planning Commission for at least three minutes. Is anybody online? Shelby?
No.
Okay, I don't see anybody jumping up, so we will move on to announcements. Are there any announcements from the Director or staff? No announcements?
We have to share mics now.
Pardon?
We have to share microphones now.
Oh, you have to share -- oh.
So it might be a little awkward. I have some announcements, but I will wait for the Director's report again.
Okay, great, all right. Any Commissioners have any announcements they'd like to make? Okay. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and usually do not require any discussion, but any member of the public can request any item can be pulled for further discussion or questions. So we have two items on the consent agenda tonight. We have the June 11th regular Planning Commission meetings, meeting minutes, and we have a use permit. This is UP 25150. It's for Gelato by the Sea. It's consideration for use permit for establishment of a new specialty restaurant located on San Carlo Street to northeast of 7th Avenue in Unit 6. Any members of the Commission have any questions about these items? Any members of the public? You have a question? Okay.
Yeah, I have a question on item 2 on this. Over the years, I have heard rumors about ice cream shops in Carmel. Is there a history regarding that at all, or is that just rumor?
Can I comment on that?
I'd love to hear your comment.
From my experience, the concern was always about takeout food.
Right.
You know, and about, you know, what was gonna be done with the ice cream. But I think this comes under a specialty restaurant.
Okay.
And I think there are some conditions of the use permit which address that. If I'm -- but staff could fill us in on that.
There's a specific, I think, I think this dates back to the Clint Eastwood being the mayor. There's a specific provision added to the code that said, "Except frozen desserts," for takeout, for the specification. I can't remember the exact language, but it's something regarding takeout food, and it says, "Except frozen desserts." So they made a carve-out specifically for ice cream shops.
So Jake, is that still in the code? So Gelato, ice cream, how, can you give me some background on that?
I think there was, the language in the code made it read such, I believe, previously, that you couldn't have takeout food that wasn't in a container, ready to go. And there was a specific carve-out that said, "Except frozen desserts." So you can get like an ice cream cone, so it just, it made it allotment for it.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any questions about any items on the consent agenda? In that case, I'll make a motion. Do we accept items number 1 and 2 on the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Alborn?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kara Petkoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
And Chair LaPage?
Yes, the motion is carried. Okay, that brings us to orders of business. First item is a report for an amendment to the reasonable accommodations policies updates. May I have staff report, please?
Absolutely. Good afternoon, Chair LaPage and Planning Commissioners. So I'm gonna be presenting this afternoon some proposed policy revisions to the city's reasonable accommodation policy. This is an adopted City Council policy, and it was adopted in 2011. So just a little background, back in 2001, a Senate bill was passed that stated cities and counties needed to remove governmental constraints to the maintenance, improvement, and development of housing for persons with disabilities. Additionally, Housing Element Law, as we've learned with our most recent Housing Element update, also identifies that we need to provide reasonable accommodations with respect to housing for persons with disabilities. So back in the city's fourth cycle Housing Element, we're currently, as you recall, in the sixth, but in the fourth cycle Housing Element, the city took steps to come into compliance with Senate Bill 520. We adopted a program that we would pursue adoption of a policy that would bring us into compliance with state law, and that's how our reasonable accommodation policy came about. Again, it was adopted in 2011 by the City Council. Since then, we have not made any changes to the policy. We've simply been implementing it. We've had 14 applications which have been approved. Almost half of those have included requests for more than one waiver or more than one accommodation. The most common requests are for waivers of our site coverage standards, and then also to setbacks, setback standards. So with the most recent Housing Element update, it triggered a review, again, of the reasonable accommodation policy to identify whether there's anything in the policy that poses a potential governmental constraint or any other constraint to equal housing opportunities. We did identify some potential constraints, and so we are proposing some revisions to the policy. The three constraints that were identified were in the permit fee structure, the subjectivity of one of the specific findings, and then also the definition of an aggrieved party. So in our adopted Housing Element, we included a program that's entitled Reasonable Accommodation Procedures. This program implements Policy 3.2, which is to recognize the special needs of persons with disabilities and the need to retain flexibility in the design review process to accommodate these needs. This is the text of the program, so this just explains that a reasonable accommodation is a change, exception, or adjustment to a rule policy or practice that allows a person with a disability to have equal opportunity to participate or an equal opportunity to access housing. The program committed the city to evaluate our policy and then look at these three items, the permit fees, the one particular finding, and that a definition of aggrieved parties. So I'm gonna start with the permit fee structure. I looked at the fiscal year 2526 fee schedule. The permit fee for a reasonable accommodation request is $205. That's in addition to any design study fees that may apply. Our design study fees range from $373, which is for a streamlined design study, all the way up to $6,000, and that's for a Track 2 design study, which is basically the construction of a new home. There are additional fees if a decision is appealed to the Planning Commission or the City Council. To date, all of the applications for reasonable accommodation have been streamlined design studies or Track 1, and none of them have been appealed up to Planning Commission or City Council. The fee for the reasonable accommodation is based simply on the administrative cost to process the application, and the fees are based on periodic fee studies. So the fee would be revisited at some point in time. I don't have a particular time when that might be, but they would, it would be reevaluated at some point in the future, and we are not proposing any changes at this time. With regards to the subjectivity of that specific finding, so the existing policy, Section 6, contains five specific findings, findings you are very familiar with. They're the same types of findings that you encounter anytime you're reviewing a development project. They reflect the rationale that is used when making a decision, and they include the reasons why the action is being taken. So finding number 5 was identified as a constraint due to its subjectivity. That finding is, sorry, that the requested accommodation will not result in a significant and unavoidable negative impact on adjacent uses or structures. That language is presumed to be borrowed from environmental laws. That sounds like something that comes out of SEQA, the California Environmental Quality So staff is recommending that the finding be revised. However, we were not able to come up with a finding that removes the subjectivity altogether, but we do think we've come up with a finding that balances the granting of reasonable accommodation with the protection of coastal resources and gives the decision-maker a framework in which to base their decision on. And the new finding is a mystery. So, apologize, I'm missing a slide in here. Basically, the new finding is grounded in the California Coastal Act. So basically, what it says is that the decision-maker may waive compliance and approve the request for the reasonable accommodation as long as four findings can be, can be made, and that is that the request for the accommodation is consistent to the maximum extent feasible with the city's regulations, that the accommodation minimizes inconsistencies and will not result in a fundamental alteration to the city's local coastal program, that there are no feasible alternative means for providing an accommodation, and that alternative accommodations do not exist. So the subjectivity is still within the finding. It's kind of hard to get away from it, but what this does is it ensures that the reasonable accommodation can be evaluated in a manner that allows the decision-maker to still approve it, but with justification and minimizing any impacts. It's not perfect, but it's certainly up for discussion as well. Sure.
Have you checked with other agencies, other cities that may have also been grappling with the same kind of thing to get examples of what they may have done for this situation?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, this, this is a really, this is a real challenge for us, being within the coastal zone and having our own, you know, having a certified local coastal program. There are, there are additional regulations that, that do not supersede state law, and so we're constantly trying to balance the provisions of state law with the provisions of the Coastal Act. And so this is kind of one of those situations where we're trying to respond to the constraint that's been identified without just wholly ignoring our local coastal plan. So we have these regulations. We're trying to make some accommodations and waiving some of these regulations, but not doing it in a manner where it's just gonna be a free-for-all. So we're trying to create a framework where it says that you need to look for other potential alternatives before you grant the waiver to minimize, to the greatest degree, the level of exception that you're granting. That's kind of the thought behind all of this, all of these words.
But, but Marnie, isn't it, isn't it, isn't it awesome? I mean, it's, this is an attempt to bring the code into compliance with SP 520, right?
So we are in compliance with 520 because we have an adopted reasonable accommodation policy. During the sixth cycle Housing Element, working with our consultant, it was identified that this finding about the accommodation having a significant and unavoidable negative impact on adjacent uses and structures was too subjective.
Correct.
So we're reevaluating that finding, and we're trying to come up with a replacement for that.
But, but who's, who's driving that? Is that HCD that's driving that, or is that, because you're saying we're already in compliance with SP 520? But is, is HCD, are you preemptively, you're trying to preempt them saying that, you know, them making a decision that this, this particular finding is too subjective? I mean, the kind of impression, where I'm going with this impression I got was that because you referred to the California Coastal Act and our local coastal program, you know, in place of this particular finding to give us the legal framework to defend ourselves against the charge of we're being too subjective. That's basically how I got this, right?
Yeah.
You know, in terms of, of terms of a bureaucratic addition to it, I mean, you've basically taken the whole Coastal Act, Chapter 3 now, which I think is 185 pages, and that becomes our defense of, or our finding for, our finding framework for what we're replacing. Is that correct? Am I reading that wrong, or?
So the paragraph is, it, it sets the stage that way, but it says, "Where a request for a reasonable accommodation is not consistent with these regulations," which by the very nature they're not, because every request is asking for a waiver, a deviation from the Coastal Act. "The city may waive compliance with an otherwise applicable provision and approve the request if we can find as follows." So there's an acknowledgement here that there's this Coastal Act, and it's, you know, it's the provision, it's the guiding provision, but the city may waive compliance with it. And here are the four, like, the four pillars that we're going to use to evaluate that waiver.
So we're just eliminating the fifth finding and...
Replacing it.
Replacing it with this statement that the requested accommodation is consistent with Chapter 3 of the California Coastal Act of 1976, and the, the other is Guidelines for Coastal Planning Permits established by the California Coastal Commission dated February 11, 1977.
So that's an, it's sort of an acknowledgement. It's, it's telling the reader that this is, these are the governing regulations. This is what the city follows, but when you get halfway down, it says, "The city may waive compliance with the Coastal Act."
Right. And it says, "Where a request for reasonable accommodation is not consistent with these regulations, the city may waive compliance with an otherwise applicable provision of these regulations and approve the request for reasonable accommodation if the city finds." And then you have, you have four findings that must meet.
Correct.
To make the, to waive, be waived, make the waiver.
Correct.
Okay.
Can we, I, I just, it's very abstract text, so I'm trying to kind of visualize that, and I'll give you an example. Five or six years ago, we had a request, no, I wasn't on the commission, but there was a request for similar accommodation. One of my neighbors has a sick child, and she wanted to have an extra-large garage for an extra-large vehicle to transport the wheelchair, and also needed an extra-large driveway, so side coverage, right, more side coverage for the driveway for the, this extra-large vehicle to go into the extra-large garage. And also, the garage has to be in the right-of-way, so that it's actually feasible to get in. So that's probably an example of where reasonable, reasonable accommodation is required, right? You said side coverage, you said setbacks, right? So I remember the discussion in this chamber five or six years ago. It was around the fact that if we give a waiver, or if the city gives a waiver for something to be built in a particular way, how do we make sure that the building goes into the original state and complies with regulations if the disability is not there anymore? Is there anything, any language in this new requirements about that, or not?
So in the existing policy, it does talk about the accommodation being for the individual with the disability.
Mm-hmm.
And that the property being restored back to its condition once the need is no longer...
There.
No longer there.
Yep, yep.
To my knowledge, we don't have a formal process in place for tracking that. Like, we wouldn't necessarily know when the need has ended.
Is that, is that a covenant or a deed restriction?
It is not. It's a condition on the approval of the request.
Okay, so it's just a condition of the permit.
Mm-hmm.
But it's hard, it's hard to monitor that, correct?
Correct.
Very hard to monitor something like that?
Yeah.
And there's, there's, and that doesn't address any of this, though. This is, this is just to make the finding for the waiver.
Correct.
Although you did mention something about that, didn't you, in here? Was, was there mention, some mention, I think it was just a sentence that said it was hard to, hard to monitor?
So if the Commission would like, you know, would like me to do some additional work on this one, I'm happy to take, take direction on that. So that was the second of the, the three revisions to the policy. The third was to look at the definition of aggrieved parties. So the current, the current policy refers back to the Municipal Code for Appeals, and it references an aggrieved, an aggrieved person. So the Municipal Code provides a definition of who an aggrieved person is, and this is the, the individual who has the right to file an appeal. And so this is a very broad definition, and it's any person who either in person or through their representative either appeared at a public hearing in connection with a decision or who by other appropriate means prior to a hearing informed the city of the nature of their concerns, or who for good cause was unable to do either. And so that's very broad. That, I mean, that basically says just about anybody who could be aggrieved. It also includes the applicant. So this was identified as a potential constraint to the reasonable accommodation policy because it was felt like, it really just, it opens up a person who has a disability, who's applying for an exception, just about anyone could appeal a decision on their application. And so the proposal, what staff is proposing, or what the, what the Housing Element program was suggesting is that we need to clarify, we should amend our definition of aggrieved person. Staff is not recommending that we do that because it affects all permits. So we are recommending that we just address it within, within the policy who can actually appeal a reasonable accommodation request. Okay, so that brings me, we're almost done, to other revisions. So other revisions are proposed to the policy. Again, this was adopted originally in 2011. We're now in 2025. So these are revisions that reflect best practices. We improved the grammar. We established some consistent formatting, and then attempted to provide some additional clarity. So we're asking for you to take a look at those as well. The Planning Commission is reviewing the policy to make a recommendation to the City Council, so we are asking that you find that your recommendation is not a project under SEQA and recommend that the City Council approved the revised policy, and I am happy to answer any questions.
So, Marnie, we're, today, we're looking at the three that you presented only, correct?
You're looking at the entire policy.
Okay, any further questions for staff?
Yes, sir.
Oh, go ahead. Commissioner Alborn?
Marnie, thank you. I, first, I'd like to just bring, bring attention to your staff report. It was extremely comprehensive and made it easy for me to understand the history behind what you're suggesting we move forward with today, so thank you. You mentioned that there had been 14 recent requests for accommodation, is that right? And that none of them had been appealed, is that right?
Correct.
Could you, and I agree with Commissioner Kara Petkoff, it's a little abstract. Could you give an example of what one or two of those might have been like?
Sure. So again, the, the majority are requests for site coverage modifications. So on a typical 4,000-square-foot lot, you're limited to about 400 square feet of site coverage. Some folks will come to us and need an accessible ramp or maybe a porch modification, something that's ADA compliant, to access their front door. Their site may already be over on site coverage, and we would say, "Well, you..." Their site may already be over on site coverage and we would say, well, you can't do site coverage modifications unless you come into compliance with the regulations. Um, and they say, well, I have a disability and I need access to my, my front door. Um, so in a situation like that, they would fill out the reasonable accommodation request and we would waive those requirements that they bring the site into compliance with site coverage. Um, sometimes that, that deck, um, or that, that porch that is, you know, ADA accessible might encroach into a setback. So they might be asking for some leniency with a setback, um, to go along with that site coverage modification. Um, so those are the most common are the site coverage and the setback standards.
And for the permit fees, were they, have they ever come into play in terms of hardship? Your big, my understanding is your, um, recommendation is to, um, keep the permit fees as they stand, is that correct?
That is correct.
And, and so permit fees have not ever been, um, mentioned in any of these requests?
Not to my knowledge, yeah.
Okay, any more questions for staff?
I, I have a question.
Good.
On the definition of a aggrieved person, right? When we look at design studies, we require applicants to notify everybody in a 300-feet radius, right? So we kind of assume that the people in this area will be the one impacted. How is that consistent to the notion that anyone can be aggrieved person?
So the, the law requires that we notify owners of real property within a certain radius. Um, but the zoning code or the, the municipal code does not limit who can appeal to people within that radius.
Okay. So it's a zoning code versus California law? Hmm, okay.
So, Marnie, in one section you talk about, like, changing, at least this was my understanding, you talked about changing the word aggrieved to specific people, is that...
So in the proposed policy, um, it has, it, it's narrowed down to, uh, the applicant can appeal a decision, um, their representative or in a budding property owner.
Okay, so then, but then when we, when you go into the appeal area, you use the term aggrieved. Should we specify in that area also exactly who, who can file the appeal?
Hopefully I did that?
It does.
Oh, it does?
Yeah, it's in A.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, A where it defines who the, um, who has standing for an appeal.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay, are we good on questions for staff at this point? We still have our discussion, so we can, we can go over things in more detail in discussion. Okay, I'm gonna invite members of the public at this time to come up and make any comments they'd like to about this, uh, proposed amendments. Don't see anybody jumping up here, anybody online, Shelby?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll, uh, close the public comments, bring it back to commissioners. Mr. Allen, you, you wanna start? Go ahead.
Sure. Um, so I, uh, I agree with, um, keeping the fee structure the same, so no change to that. Um, I like, uh, your suggestion and recommendation around replacing, um, the subjectivity and adding in the information, um, bringing in from the Coastal Act. Um, and then I, um, align with changing or actually defining what aggrieved, um, uh, person, um, actually, uh, being specific as to who those are. And then, um, I like the addition of the interactive process, um, when there is, um, when we have denied the request.
Commissioner Alber, you wanna make your comments?
Uh, I echo Commissioner Allen's comments. I especially like the new language that, um, does reduce and minimize the subjectivity, um, for the decision maker. Um, it provides a little, uh, tighter guidance and, um, I think that's exceptionally, uh, important when we're talking about reasonable accommodation. So I support all the policies, thank you.
Mr. Locke?
Agree with what has previously been said, um, but I would also recommend that you consider, um, under 2C, the, um, which states a reasonable accommodation is granted only to the household that needs the accommodation and does not apply to successors in interest to the site. Um, you really should have a deed restriction limitation of use on the property that, uh, would notify future property owners. Um, otherwise it will get lost and it will never be enforced and at some point when you enforce, it'll be a problem.
That's a good idea.
And Commissioner Kara Petkoff?
Yeah, it is very difficult to kind of think for the different scenarios because disability is a very broad term. You can have all sorts of disabilities and, um, I mentioned just one example with my neighbor. I usually like to think in terms of examples. Another example that I remember about three or four years ago, we had a project by Eric Miller down on Camino Real, I guess. And, uh, it was about a house that, uh, the owner was in the seventies or eighties and they got it approved, started building it, and then in the middle of construction, the owner fell and broke something. And all of the sudden, they couldn't take the stairs anymore. So I think they filed, um, a request for reasonable accommodation, asking for two elevators, because the house was like this. So you had to build one elevator to take people from the garage to the first floor and a little bit in the back to build another elevator to take people from the first floor to the second floor. And there was a big discussion in this room about that project. The first elevator was approved because it wasn't visible, it didn't impact the look and feel of the house. The second elevator wasn't. So in effect, the commission decided that that person would have unrestricted access between the garage and the first floor, but if they wanna go to the second floor, you know, they need to use something else, some other way of getting up, because there was no approval for the second elevator. So this, this accommodation policies have limits and we need to be clear on where, where these limits are. There's a certain point where they start impacting the whole project and the neighborhood and the look and feel of the whole project. So we need to be clear on, on, and I, I don't know what these lines are, this happened long before I joined the commission, but it would be important to understand what the guidelines are, how, how much of accommodation is there. And, and I'm just, you know, looking at these examples, trying to understand where the line is. When do we say this is reasonable and that is not?
Well, I mean, I, I think what you're suggesting is additional finding, but I'm not quite sure where, what that is.
Yeah.
So, I, I, at this point, we're basically making a recommendation with, uh, with additional direction. So, um, anyway, do you, do you wanna?
No, no, this is, this is fine. No, I, I support, I support the, the changes, uh, here. I'm just trying to figure out, I, I guess it's call to action to all the architects in town to build accessible houses so that if somebody has an accessibility problem, they don't need to ask for additional accommodation, that they think forward about, you know, for example, one problem I had with architects is that sometimes they, uh, designed doors that are 28 or 30 inches wide while the ADA recommends 32 inches wide doors so that the wheelchairs can go through. And I keep, every time I see a project, I open the, the door schedule and look at how wide the doors are. Very often they're like too narrow for a wheelchair to go through.
Right, but it isn't a standard that applies to that particular project. It's, and that's, that's the point of, you know, we have standards for specific needs, but they also only apply to certain projects.
True, true.
So, yeah, we can't, I mean, I mean, and I think obviously if, if you're having the house designed for yourself by a particular architect, you can make that a condition, but, you know, we, we, we have to, uh, work under the standards of which, you know, are, is in our code. So, um...
No, I'm, I'm supportive of everything that helps with reasonable accommodations and helping people with disabilities, um, you know, live comfortably in our community.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, yeah, I'm, I think we've given good direction. I, I, uh, specifically want to repeat what Commissioner Locke said. I think it's, it would be very important to have, uh, some type of deed restriction and necessary, so, uh, I would, uh, suggest we include that in our motion to, for a recommendation to city council. So we have a resolution as per staff, let me open that up. Can you, um, can you just, can you add that, that language to the resolution?
I certainly can.
Yeah, so the, uh, so I, I would make a motion, we accept a resolution as per staff with the additional direction that, um, a deed restriction is included.
Good, I'll second.
With reasonable accommodation. Seconded. All right, any more discussion? Hearing unrolled call, please.
Commissioner Albor?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kara Petkoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
And Chair LaPage.
Yes, motion is carried.
Chair?
Yes.
Um, I've been communicating with IT and they have a, or we've come up with a potential fix, so you all can see the presentation.
They're, they're gonna, they've got something.
At the DIAS. Um, but we will need, however, like a 10, 15-minute break.
Okay, all right, all right, we'll, uh, we'll take a break at this time so IT can work out the issue with our monitors. So we, uh, will reconvene at, what, um, 10 after? 10 after 5, okay. You're free to go. It's the 15 minutes. Is that you talking? Yeah, that's one of them. She's kind of a baby, too. Good to go now? We get all of our IT problems worked out?
Enough, yes.
Kind of. It's pretty non-committal. Okay, uh, we're gonna reconvene the meeting, I guess we have to call roll call again.
All right, Commissioner Albor? Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Kara Petkoff?
Here.
Commissioner Locke?
Here.
And Chair LaPage?
Here. Okay, um, this brings us to the next item on the Orders of Business, which is a Director's Interpretation Consideration Resolution Accepting Director's Interpretation, clarifying how to measure and dimension basement spaces for the purposes of calculating floor area in basement and underground spaces.
Thank you, Chair. All right, so, um, as just described, this is a Director's Interpretation. So a inconsistent application of the zoning code related to basement spaces specifically related to floor area and volume of said spaces has been identified. Uh, the goal of this interpretation is to clarify how basement spaces should be measured and dimensioned, ensuring consistent application of zoning regulations. Uh, so the Director, um, does have the authority to implement, um, the title, being Title 17, um, which is the zoning code, um, and the Director shall determine the intent of all provisions. Uh, determinations of the Director may be appealed, um, in accordance with the Appeal Section of the Municipal Code. Um, so no appeals have been filed. Um, however, the Planning Commission does have the power and responsibility to interpret the meaning and intent of the city's land use code. This interpretation does reverse a longstanding interpretation of the zoning code. So staff and the Director are seeking concurrence to formally recognize this new interpretation to ensure a consistent application of the city's zoning code, um, as well as to open discussion at a public hearing. Um, so the definition of floor area in part says that all attic, basement, storage shed spaces with five or more feet of clearance between the floor or walking surface and the ceiling or roof surface shall be counted in, as floor area. Uh, so the inverse of that is that if it's less than five feet, it's not included in floor area. So there's a few examples on the screen. Uh, one is a shed, a storage shed that is less than five feet. This would be counted as site coverage as provided by the little definition on the bottom. Sheds not counted as floor area are considered site coverage. Um, within an attic, if the, the space between the walking surface and the roof is less than five feet, that is exempt from floor area. Um, and then similarly, um, within a basement space, if the clearance between the walking surface and the, um, ceiling above is less than five feet, that is exempt from floor area, um, per the definition. Um, so what, um, the current interpretation has been is to, uh, use drop ceilings or artificial design elements to effectively artificially lower, um, that ceiling height. Um, so that's, this has been a longstanding practice, um, that has been, um, allowed by the city, um, and it is reliant purely on the definition of floor area. However, it's contrary to other provisions of the zoning code and did not consider all other relevant code sections. Um, so there's an example, um, in the figures below. Um, it is a project that was approved by the Planning Commission where, um, it actually was, uh, approved as a raised floor that had a clearance of, uh, five feet or less. Um, in reality, it was constructed to the, the full height clearance. Um, what happened was, you know, we, we go, do a, an inspection, say, hey, this wasn't constructed to the approved plans. So then a drop ceiling is installed, reducing that clearance. However, it's, it's ultimately that same full height volume. Um, so, as I mentioned, it's contrary to other provisions of the zoning code. Um, there's another municipal code section that states limits on the amount of volume that may be built in a basement are defined by the interior, are the defined interior ceiling height for basement, which as we go back to the definition of basement, are between five and nine feet of interior height, um, which is that, that full volume space, irregardless of that, uh, drop ceiling feature. So when we're looking at the full volume of a basement, um, whether or not you have that drop ceiling feature or in some cases a built-up floor, that volume space is still the same. Um, so to, to demonstrate this, I brought some props because it is a little bit abstract to, to just think about. Um, so imagine, I'll try to put this somewhere where everyone can see it. Imagine this is your full, um, 1,800 square feet that is allowed for a house. And I'm gonna reorganize this. This, uh, green piece of paper is your, your grade. So you have your 1,800 square feet that's allowed for your whole house, it's above ground. The city actually gives you a basement bonus for locating some floor area below grade. So we will stick some floor area below grade. And as an incentive, you get to double that same amount of floor area. So that is your, your full allowable floor area and volume allowed in the basement. However, the, the city's practice, what we've allowed is this drop, drop ceiling feature to be constructed, also in a basement. Let's see if I can balance this. Which then expands and increases the size and volume of the basement. Um, so again, when you consider the full definition of floor area as well as that additional provision in 1710030D4C, the, the size of the volume has then been expanded past what is allowed per the zoning code. There we go. So again, yes, the issue with the prior practice is that, um, the basement floor area and volume are intended to be limited and ignoring a... volume are intended to be limited, and ignoring a portion of the basement area can create a zoning violation. So in summary, what the policy does, which is attached to the staff report, is it clarifies what the term clearance is, and that is the, it's the measurement between the floor or walking surface, and it's measuring to the underside of the structural floor above, ignoring any type of drop ceiling or artificial, artificially installed framing. So you're measuring the structural components. So in the figure on the top left, you're measuring from the basement slab to the floor level above, ignoring that four foot eight dimension. That would be a drop ceiling. On the top right, that is the full basement volume, that's a correct measurement. On the bottom left, you do have one of those shelf slabs. However, that shelf area is less than five feet, so that is an example of something that would be excluded from floor area. And then on the bottom right, that's five feet or greater, so that full area would be included in floor area. These are just some illustrative examples, and there are a few more attached to the policy. And again, the policy objective is to ensure that basement volumes or basement spaces meet all zoning standards, and then also to assist with enforcement. Many projects we're seeing with these features are not built to the approved plans, resulting in number of violations and after the fact enforcement, which is often resource intensive and often ineffective. So with that, staff is recommending the Planning Commission adopt a resolution accepting the Director's Interpretation. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
So Evan, how does this become part of the code? What's the process for that?
It already is part of the code. We are, we are changing the way in which we have applied the code, so.
So, so the code is being, has been applied using these, the false ceiling or drop ceiling before?
Correct.
So that was, that was a interpretation of this language?
Correct. The interpretation only looked at 1710030D1, meaning that it only looked at the provision that said, if it's less than five feet, it's not floor area. And that was basically period, end of sentence. What wasn't looked at was the provision in 1710030D4 that limited the amount of volume that could be constructed in a basement.
The what?
That limited the amount of volume that could be constructed in a basement.
So that language is being added to that?
It's not, it's not being added, it's being enforced.
It's being enforced, okay. It wasn't being enforced.
It wasn't being enforced.
Okay, are you gonna add this, this resolution? We have the resolution and then we have the determination. We have these two different documents, I'm just trying to.
So what we're asking the Planning Commission to do is basically just.
We got the resolution, which is accepting your, you know, the, the language that's in the resolution, and you have this basement floor area draft policy. So that becomes, that becomes a code document, the draft policy?
No, the policy is a Director's Interpretation.
Just for staff?
We are saying.
Just direction for staff to interpret the policy?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to be clear on that.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a code update. We, we actually were exploring an amendment to the code to do such a thing, and then we realized we didn't need to, the language is already here.
Yeah, because it's a lot more involved, and all we could do is make a recommendation to council, and then it would have to have a first reading and all that other stuff they have to go through to make a code change, so.
Evan, I was trying to rack my brain to figure out if there's any examples where somebody was doing the right thing, but this would negatively impact them, this interpretation. I couldn't think of any. Did you guys think of any that potentially would be impacted even though they are trying to do the right thing? I, and my second question is, in the top left corner, can you tell us, like, what then would they do in that situation to ensure that they were under five feet? Would, would they just need to either bring the bottom up or the top down? Is that what you're thinking?
That's what they're trying to.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the top left is what we're trying to avoid.
Yeah, but I meant so, so that they were in, in compliance with the new interpretation. They would just then build a, some, some sort of permanent structure above, or, or they would bring the, the base up.
Well, this, this isn't retroactive.
Yeah, and they could still do.
It's not retroactive.
They could still do that.
Yeah.
They could still build that, but the way that it's calculated is as if that ceiling were.
Gotcha.
At the height.
Okay.
Yeah, so it, the, great, great questions and great points. It's not retroactive, so it'd just be for projects moving forward. If someone wanted to do, you know, a five foot mechanical area, the option on the bottom left is still possible.
Gotcha.
It's just the, the over excavation and then reducing, or, you know, disqualifying an area from floor area just with the drop ceiling would no longer be an option. It actually has to be the structural area, because what we're seeing is.
Yep.
These huge areas of excavation.
Right.
You know, I provided one example, but truthfully, it's almost every project that we're seeing this on. You know, a huge basement area is excavated, and then this drop ceiling isn't installed in the mechanical area, it's just huge.
Gotcha.
It's effectively, you know, a couple hundred extra square feet of floor area on the project. And then, you know, the basement's already built out, there's, there's nothing we can do, any type of enforcement's really just ineffective.
Any more questions for staff?
So this, this will actually make it more difficult to, to do what people are doing. So basically, you could have a fully excavated basement and provide this step on the lower left side, but you're just doing it with concrete, and then you remove it later. But it's gonna be more difficult to do than just removing the, like a drop ceiling. So, so we're just making it more difficult for people to do it, we're not completely eliminating the possibility that they will do it. Is that correct?
So the measurements from the slab, so, so we can add a different diagram that would show, I'll use the laser pointer up here, this is. It's gonna work. There it is.
Uh huh.
This extending over, oh, my hands are shaky, but.
Exactly.
If that extends over and that's poured, the measurement would be from the slab up, up to the floor.
Okay.
And that, that might be an additional diagram to add, but that, that's the intent, it's from, from the bottom of the, or the slab to, to the floor.
Okay.
So Evan, would, would this Director's Interpretation then also provide direction to the Building Department and inspections? I mean, at what point would this new interpretation? It, it sounds like you're seeking an enforceable interpretation? So how?
Yes.
How, how would that happen?
So within the policy, there's a section on implementation. It says, "No inspection shall be passed or permitted final until the project is constructed in accordance with the zoning code, the approved plans, and is consistent with this policy."
Okay, any more questions? All right. Any questions? Anybody want to make any comments from the chamber here? Nobody jumping up? Anybody online there, Shelby?
No, sir. Oh, wait, we do now. We have Brian Congleton.
We have a hand up? Okay, Brian Congleton, you have your hand up. Brian, wanna talk to us? Doesn't look like he's muted. Maybe he went for a drink. Forgot to come back after our last break. Brian, are you there?
No, he dropped.
Oh, took his hand down. Okay, I guess Brian definitely wants to talk to us. All right, in that case, I'm gonna close the public comments, open it up to the Commissioners. Anybody wanna jump in?
I'll jump.
Go ahead.
Thanks. This, no, this, I support staff 100% on this. It sounds like it's an enforcement issue, that people are finding ways to get around the system, and this is one way to reduce the problems. I'm assuming that what you're seeing is drop ceilings or raised floors that are being removed after the fact, after they've had inspections, and so that's a potential problem. And so I completely think that this is a great way to deal with it, and I support that. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Allen?
Yeah, I am in alignment with Commissioner Locke, and yep, fully support this, volume is volume.
Commissioner Alborn?
I agree with Commissioner Locke and Commissioner Allen.
Commissioner Kara Petkoff, any comments?
Yeah, it's just a loophole that we need to close. I'm, I was listening to a question from Commissioner Allen, if there are any scenarios in which, which we would do harm by removing that option. Wine cellars, utility closets, I'm thinking through the scenarios. Cannot think of scenario in which this is gonna be hurting anyone. If somebody comes up with a scenario, maybe we need to think about it, but it looks like we're not gonna hurt anyone, we're just making people follow the rules. And, and we have never seen any projects with this explicitly stated in the plans. So basically, we approve the project based on the calculation of the legal basement space, right? And we assume that that's what's gonna be built. Now what we're learning is that people go and build another couple of hundred square feet of space and just put a two by four on the wall and say, this is my new ceiling. That makes zero sense, so I think we should just close the loophole and forget about it, yeah. Thank you.
Yes, it's a, it's a good clarification, and we, we have a resolution?
Yeah, we have approval of the resolution as presented by staff.
I can second that.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Alborn?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kara Petkoff? Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
And Chair LaPage?
Yes, motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, that concludes the Orders of Business, part of our agenda tonight. We move on to the public hearings. The first item on the public hearing tonight is a design study, 25017, the Hobbs Project's Consideration of Concept Design Study for the Demolition of 1,111 square foot, one-story single-family residence and Construction of a 1,795 square foot, one-story, single-family residence, inclusive of a 224 square foot detached garage, and it's located on Santa Rita Street, 3 Northeast First Avenue. We have staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair.
You're doing all the work tonight, Evan.
Yeah.
Where, where is it? Where's everybody else? Oh, they're there. They're all here. Sorry, Marty, Marty sent her work.
Okay, so the subject site is 6,000 square feet? I think that number's correct, I'm doubting myself right now, but the existing site is 1,776 square feet, developed with a 1,111 square foot residence, as well as a 655 square foot, two-story guest house. No changes are proposed to the guest house. The applicant is proposing to effectively reconstruct the existing residence within the same footprint, and is proposing a number of additions, including a 441 square foot addition, 24 square foot addition, eight square foot fireplace addition, and a new 224 square foot detached garage in the front setback. The site is really interesting. It is partially located in unincorporated Monterey County, as well as partially within the city of Carmel. We have gone through the process of working with Monterey County, the, the City Council, the property owner, to enter into a land use agreement that ties the property as a single parcel for the purpose of, basically permit processing. So even though there is a portion of the property within the county, all, all parties involved have agreed to process the permit, subject to the rules and regulations of Carmel by the sea, including the portions of the property immediately adjacent within the right-of-way. So quite, quite unusual, but that has gone through. That was accepted by the City Council, as well as the Monterey County Board of Supervisors. Just yet to be recorded, but all parties have agreed to, to the land use agreement. So there are two and a half rated trees on site, as well as two and a half trees in the right-of-way. Two trees are significant, three are non-significant. The non-significant trees are all proposed for removal. We do have a condition of approval related to meeting the tree, recommended tree density prior to scheduling for final inspection. So that'd be a total of four upper canopy and three lower canopy trees, as well as a condition requiring a landscape plan prior to scheduling final inspection, or, sorry, final, final hearing, as well as landscape being, being incorporated in the right-of-way as part of the landscape plan. So as part of the review, staff did not identify any privacy or view impacts. We were not identified or contacted by any of the neighbors regarding the project. As previously mentioned, the, the existing residence is proposed to be reconstructed primarily within the same footprint. However, there are additions and alterations proposed. You know, windows are proposed to be reorganized, the roof is proposed to be a bit taller. However, the, the project complies with all, all applicable zoning standards. There is a detached garage proposed for the front setback. There are six findings that need to be made. Project needs finding number one, four, and six. In respect to finding number two, at least 50% of the adjacent right-of-ways landscaped. As previously mentioned, we have that condition regarding landscaping in the right-of-way. There is a condition of approval regarding root exploration for the detached garage. Finding number three states that the proposed setback encroachment would not impact significant trees. So it is outside the six-foot tree protection zone, but as a precaution, the forester has recommended root exploration prior to building permit issuance. So that will be included in the forthcoming resolution prior to final project approval. And then as you saw on site today, the story poles were not installed correctly for the garage, so we have a condition of approval for finding number five that says all development will be in scale with adjacent properties, so this will be reevaluated prior to the final details hearing. And with that, staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt a resolution accepting the concept design as described on the screen. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Okay, thank you. All right, I don't see Adam here tonight. Is he, is he coming in remotely, or?
Adam couldn't make it. One of his colleagues is, is here to present the, the project.
Okay, all right, well, I'd like to invite you at this time to come forward, make your presentation.
Do you need to push? Okay. Okay. Good evening, Chair LaPage, members of the Planning Commission, staff. My name is Arnaud Ginnard, I'm here on behalf of Adam Jasselnik, who is the architect representing the Hobbs and the house under consideration. We are here tonight to request your approval of this consent. We are here tonight to request your approval of this concept design. And we are also very thankful to the staff for the detailed reports and recognition of, for approval. I'll keep my comments brief. This project proposes an expansion and updating of the existing residence and a new detached garage. And we are planning to keep the guest house as is. We believe that the project fits well within the neighborhood context. It's modest in scale for a 6,000-square-feet lot. It's respectful of massing the privacy and the views. And we also feel that it aligns with the existing character of the house and its, its conditions. We are preserving the significant trees on the site. And we are planting new trees in accordance with the city code and foresters' recommendations. We are bringing side coverage into compliance and we keep the heights and setbacks within the zoning requirements. And the main change here is the increased roof pitch to six and 12, which allows us to have a slightly taller house, but keeping it balanced and what we consider elegant proportions. And to finalize, the detached garage is in the front setback, which is allowed by the code and adds some diversity to the, to the street. Again, here we are to, to request your approval. And we're committed to work with staff to meet the conditions of approval. Happy to answer any questions if we have. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the architect? I have a question.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. I have a question related to the, your proposed garage setback and that significant tree. Staff has said that our forester has recommended that some exploration be done for that root coverage. And so how, how would you do that?
Well, we can plan with the forester to, for sure, prune the tree. As you have noticed, on the site visit, the flaring has been misplaced as well. It needs to be raised up by two feet. We can either consider, see how it affects the, the existing tree or even consider moving it, shifting it.
I'm sorry, I think perhaps you misunderstood my question. The forester is talking about the roots of that significant tree. And it appears that they might be under, was that a concrete driveway perhaps? So my, my question to you would be, how, how would your project proceed in order to explore the safety of those roots, given that you are proposing that your garage setback be just six feet, seven inches from that tree?
Well, we're beyond the six-foot protection root zone, so we should be good. But also we are considering to keep the, the driveway as is and placing the garage where, where it's located. So if there's any, any problem there, we can consider shifting the garage.
I see. And will you be in communication with the forester during that process?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Auburn? I, I can expand on that as well. Typically, what we see when we do root exploration is we'll remove the, the area of site coverage and then we'll authorize trenching where the foundation is proposed to go through hand digging. And that way we can explore where, if roots will enter into the area of the foundation. If there are roots, then we'll know whether a alternative type of foundation needs to be proposed or if the structural needs to be moved.
Thank you, sir. And then how does that, how does that happen after the approval of a concept study, design study? Is that included in our resolution? How, how is the communication done between the forester and planning and the, the folks on site?
So if the garage could be, so let, let's say hypothetically, the you know, there, there are no roots, then the project can proceed as proposed. If there are roots, the forester may determine that the abridged footing is appropriate and the, the foundation would be constructed with a abridged footing to avoid adverse impact to the tree. If the, the roots within that area are so significant that it would result in an adverse impact, then the applicant would need to come back to propose an alternative.
I see. And then, so is that included in our resolution?
Not, not presently.
I see.
Not, not in a draft. That's normally included in the, in the, the final approval resolution.
Yeah, so.
We usually have, we usually put, we have standard language for that. Yeah. But that, that, that will have to be in the, the, the final resolution.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the architect? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time I'd like to invite any members of the public, come forward and make any comments on this particular application. And I believe you're the owner, right?
I'm the owner, Karen Hobbs, and thank you all for considering our project. And we've been waiting for this day, so we're really happy to be here today. The lot merger was an ordeal, I think, three years. And it was supposed to be quick because it just didn't get recorded properly, so it was a horrendous wait. But we're so excited because this is a great city. We love being here. We can't wait to be here more and bring our twin grandsons to spend summers and other times of year and just enjoy the city. So just very excited that we're getting very close. Want to thank you. Any questions for me?
Any questions for the owner? Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other members of the public like to make any comments regarding this application? Anybody online?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm going to close the public comments, open it up to the commissioners. Commissioner Kara Petkoff, you want to begin?
Yeah, I, I think it's, the, the project is in compliance with our design guides. It's a single story that makes everything very easy. It, it's not too high. I think the plate is eight feet. Standard roof, 412. Siding, roofing material, have no objections. So it, it looks, it looks good. I have no real objections. I went through the numbers and it all seems to make sense. If we can figure out the roots for the trees, so that we don't damage any trees on the property, that would be best. But in terms of the design, I think Adam did a good job in designing this house and making it very similar to the house that is on site. I mean, there's a little bit of a change, but you know, the footprint stays the same, a little bit adding on the, on the north side. But in general, kind of the, the same feeling and it doesn't impact the neighborhood in a negative way. So I think it's a good design and it fits well the street. Thank you.
Commissioner Auburn?
Thank you, Chair. I, I think I simply would agree with what Commissioner Kara Petkoff has said with the additional concern about that significant tree, just to make sure that we have that covered. And thank you for explaining more of that happens at the final time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen?
Yes, I, I feel like it's pretty straightforward and it looks like a fine project to me.
Mr. Locke?
I, I agree. Thank you.
Okay, we have a resolution which has some draft conditions, but they're pretty standard, volume study, needs a landscape plan. Story poles need to be corrected on the garage. And then the last one says, "Prior to scheduling for final details review, the applicant show work with staff provides the plans set to include requisite information necessary." What, what's that?
Yeah, so that, that's more of a, a housekeeping item for, for, for staff. The applicant elected to defer a number of items until final details. So staff had prepared a completeness review and in their response, the applicant stated deferred until after concept, so that's just.
Those are finishing details primarily?
Yeah, yeah, so that, that's like.
Yeah, which we normally do.
That's effectively a reminder to say,
Okay.
remember these are forthcoming.
Okay, all right, that's the resolution as per staff. Do we want to provide any additional design direction? I didn't hear anything, other than the concern for the trees, which we need to address that in final. Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution as per staff.
I can second that.
All right, any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Auburn?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kara Petkoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
And Chair LaPage?
Yes, the motion is carried. Thank you, everyone. Okay, that moves us on to item number six on the public hearings. This is a, another design study. It's 25126, the Corrman project. It's consideration for track one, design study referral, the installation of a new three-foot tall wall and driveway gate in the front yard, in the front setback, as well as removal of existing retaining wall and installation of a new retaining wall exceeding the height limits. It's located on Mission Street, 2 northwest of Second Avenue. Staff report, please.
So this project is for the, excuse me, the replacement of an existing retaining wall, with the new retaining wall exceeding the height limits that may be approved by staff, so it is a referral. The existing retaining wall is shown in the photos on the bottom left. The new retaining wall is proposed to be approximately six foot, six inches for the portions of the wall outside of the front setback. The height limit that can be approved by staff is six feet. Within the front setback, the wall is proposed to be between six feet and five feet. Portions of the wall that can be, within the front setback, that can be approved by staff, the height limit is three feet. However, the planning commission does have the authority to approve taller walls. There is a existing retaining wall that is failing. As you saw on the site visit today, there is a very significant steep slope there. And the wall is in, in effectively a dire need of repair. The wall is proposed to be replaced in, in effectively the same location. There is some deviation. But it is a structural repair to support the soil above. This is the proposed location, as well as the design. Again, it's a consistent six-foot, six-inch height outside of the front setback and then slightly steps down within the front setback. An additional project component is, oh, sorry, got ahead of myself. So we do have two, two conditions of approval. One was included in the rec, the resolution. One is an addition that staff is recommending. You make on the, the dais. So condition of approval number 20 states that landscaping for the re-establishment of landscaping in the area of the new retaining wall be provided in accordance with the requirements of the park overlay. So going back a slide. The area above the new retaining wall is proposed on the plans to be cleared out for pedestrian and equipment access. And staff also has concerns about the area in front of the retaining wall being cleared out during construction. The park overlay has landscaping requirements, so condition of approval number 20 would re-establish that landscaping consistent with the requirements of the park overlay. And then condition of approval number 22 states that the new retaining wall shall be stucco to match the finish of the existing residence. There was a note in a earlier version of the plans to this effect, however, I, I think in one of the revisions, this note might have got lost, so this just clarifies the, the finish of, of the, the wall. The residential design guidelines do state that a stone wall is preferred. However, they also state that plaster stucco is appropriate when consistent with the character of the house. Additional, an additional component of the project is, the applicant is proposing a new three-foot tall stone wall, as well as a driveway gate and a stone arch with gate. Staff is asking the planning commission to consider whether the painted metal is an appropriate material based on the design guidelines. The driveway gate, as well as the pedestrian gate within the archway, is proposed to be a painted metal. We do have a number of residential design guidelines that speak to gate materials, as well as fence materials, as you may recall from our discussion handful of months back now regarding driveway gates. We don't have specific standards regarding driveway gates, however, we do use the standards for, for fences and walls when we consider driveway gates. So that this gate, this driveway gate is proposed to be, have a wood-clad perimeter with a painted metal interior. And then the pedestrian gate is a, just a, a painted metal. So staff is asking for the commission's direction regarding this. However, as the primary project component is the need to replace the retaining wall, staff has prepared a resolution for approval regarding, specifically regarding the retaining wall and then again seeking direction regarding the other project components. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any other questions.
Questions for staff? Go ahead.
Thank you, Evan. For the stone arch, were any dimensions provided for the proposed stone arch?
It's seven feet tall, which is the, the maximum height. That would be permitted and that dimension was provided. Let me see if there is a dimension regarding the, the length and width of the the actual the landscape architect is here who could potentially speak to that if we don't have the dimension called out.
It, it appears larger than what I usually see around town is the reason why I'm asking. And that ends my questions.
Evan, they're not, they're not proposing metal on top of that stone wall, are they? Because they've got this picture.
No, no, it, it would just be the three-foot tall stone wall, then the, the driveway gate and then the arch, the.
And, and what's, what, you probably, this is probably a question for the architect. I'm just wondering what the height of the gate is that's proposed inside the arch. But I, I'll ask the architect about that. You got a question, Commissioner Kara Petkoff?
Yeah, I was just concerned that this stone arch is too low for me, for example, to go through. If it's seven on top, it's six feet or less inside. So I'm 6'2", I would never be able to go for that. Just my concern. So maybe, maybe it has to be more practical to be, you know, at least seven and a half or six and a half feet inside. Yeah, that's, that's the only comment I have.
Okay, any other questions for staff? All right, would the architect like to come up and do the presentation? It's, it's evening.
My name is Scott Hall. I'm a landscape architect on the project for Jordan and Heather Croman, and thank you very much. I got involved almost a year ago, I guess. Mason, friend of mine, said, "I've got a little project. There's a little wall that's failing." And walked onto the site and said, "You can step aside. We need, we need a structural engineer and soils report here." And so that's what we've been working on. I think the wall probably was built steel I-beam with railroad ties in the 1970s. We don't really know how deep it was, it went. It doesn't really matter. It's listed even more in the time that I've been involved in the project, out of plumb than what I originally saw. What you saw today is, is it's, it's moving. There's a house up above that is exiting water at the base of their footing and that's, they've corrected it, or they, they're going to correct it, but there, that's been a contribution to it. We don't know if, perhaps maybe there's some groundwater too, but I think we all agree that this, this wall needs to be replaced. And so per the structural engineer's plans, there are piers that go down 13 and a half feet. So finding a, a contract. So finding a contractor that was willing to work in a very tight space and take on that challenge was, took some time, but we, we found, we found somebody from the Bay Area. So that will hopefully happen. And we would like to have this obviously approved before the, and, and by you. And then go back into the, for working drawings and have all that approved for building permit before the fall. Because as winter comes, nobody wants to be working on this. I think there was a question about what are you going to do with the wall that's there? The idea is to work behind it and use that as the retention and then fill back in and remove that at the end. The wall itself is, is port concrete and then stucco that matches the house, the finish of the house and would be the same color. We're not planning on celebrating the entirety of the, of the stucco, though. It would be planted and that would come in with the next phase. It's been recommended by staff. And, and we've always thought to comply, or we're going to plan, planning to comply with that. And so we would have draping shrubs and, and vertical shrubs at the bottom. And so that should mitigate any concern for, for the height. But as far as the height, we initially thought we could step it quite quickly. It's six and a half feet now existing for much of the way. And then it does step to five. And, and we're hoping to do that. But the structural engineers admonished me for that and said, no, you better ask for at least six and a half feet the whole way because we don't know what we're going to find and we can always go back. But I, I, you know, I'd rather start. It would be an extreme. So that's, that was what we're doing. And that, I think, is pretty much the, the fence part of, of the project. As far as the entry, the low entry wall and the arch, I think it can be sort of agreed that where this came from, the idea is that you just arrive and there's a driveway. What, what we're trying to do here is delineate an invitation onto the property. And so that is hence the, the arch on the right-hand side. As far as the, the gate, we started out with a solid gate, but then sort of what the understanding was is that the public wanted to be able to share the view of the garden. So that's, that's why the, the metal. And then the, as far as the driveway gate itself, the iteration that came up is, is just presented as, as a metal see-through gate, but it's most likely going to have to bifurcate instead of just slide. And, and that's going to be an interesting proposition for a, a good metal worker. But we'll work that out with the working drawings. The reason, besides the invitation, is that the owners live right across the street from a very busy park and busy all times of the day and evening. And Jordan Croman will speak more to that. But there is a, a safety and privacy issue. There have been balls and children and pets that sort of end up in the backyard. And, and what this does is, is offer at least a barricade for that for a time. As far as the dimension of the arch, the height was seven, the height is seven feet. But the arch in the photo that we're sort of representing, which is in the neighborhood, is about over two feet. We're not going to be that wide. We might be twenty inches, maybe a little bit more at the most by the time a stone is, you know, applied to a structure. So I, I think that in conclusion, the, the walls function for, for what we're looking to prevent the hillside coming down. And as far as the aesthetics for the entry wall, it certainly fits the neighborhood. If there are any questions, I'll take them at this time.
Scott, how, how high are you proposing to make the gate inside the arch?
I know it's, it shows it probably being closer to four and a half or five feet. But we'd like to make it in that case, we'd like to do forty-four inches, forty-six inches. I don't think it needs to be five feet. Unless there's a
Yeah, the maximum, I think it's, it's four feet in the, in the front yard setback, five feet? Okay.
Yeah.
So you can, you can go to five feet in the, in the front yard setback.
Okay.
Okay, other questions for the architect?
So what is the total width of the arch area?
The interior width of the
No, the exterior to exterior of the arch.
Would you believe, no, if, if, if it's twenty inches, forty-four inches, forty-four inches. It's probably, the opening itself is probably going to be thirty-eight plus, let's see, three feet, five feet, six and a half feet, seven feet? Three, yeah, six and a half feet, something like that. It'll all shake out in the, in the working drawings.
Any other questions? Okay, it's kind of an interesting retaining wall design. I haven't seen one like that before.
Excuse me?
So I haven't seen a retaining wall that designed before where they've got the, a wall that's, that's sitting on top of pier columns.
Right, right.
So there, there's not a continuous footing.
Right.
At least as the way I'm understanding, maybe I'm
Well, and that's what I thought was going to happen. But then when we started looking at it, the, the, the footing would end up being halfway under the house.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be gigantic. You'd have to huge excavation.
And, and the, the particular Morris Schaefer, the, the guys are in, the structural engineer is out of San Carlos and they do a lot of, of work in San Francisco where they're working right next to a house on a
So they're, they're, they've got the experience to do that.
They know what they're doing. I'm just, I'm just adding the pretty stuff.
Yeah. Well, you're, you're lucky to find some individuals that have that kind of experience because it's a pretty challenging project.
Right, it is.
Okay, any more questions for the architect? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Croman would like to speak.
Thank you.
Good evening. Appreciate your time and consideration in this manner. We've been, as Scott mentioned, we've been trying to work this for quite some time. So we'd like to get it rolling. The, the two things I'd like to stress with you about this project, both the wall, the retaining wall and the front wall, are I look at this as a safety and security issue. And the retaining wall is obviously a safety and security issue. That retaining wall, as you can see, is rapidly moving towards our house. And not only that, but it's holding up the hillside where our neighbors are. And so, you know, for our own home's security and safety and for that of our neighbors, that project needs to happen. And as Scott mentioned, we were able to find someone that we feel very comfortable will actually be able to provide a high-quality product that is going to do what it's supposed to do. We, we had a lot of other people that said, you know, we're not sure if what we're going to offer you is going to work. And so we obviously didn't want to go in that direction. The exterior wall, though, is interesting. So there are six walls within two blocks of our home that go along the street. One is three feet tall, four or four feet or higher, and one is six feet tall. The three feet maximum that we're talking about is problematic to me because it's not going to do what I'm going to talk to you guys about next, which is some level of security from the park. So we routinely have, we live right across the street from Forest Hill Park, as you guys saw. The sign on the park says, the park hours are sunrise to sunset. Park is closed from sunset to sunrise. That, that rule is never enforced, never enforced. So we have people and we love the fact that that park is used a lot during the day, tons of kids. We love the fact that that's happening. We have three grandchildren that we bring over there as well. But we routinely find pets, owners, equipment, whatever, in our side yard and in our back garden. And just people roaming through because that's where their pets went. Additionally, the restrooms in those, in that park are lit twenty-four hours a day and are open twenty-four hours a day. And so you routinely hear a lot of adult voices in that park area during the evening and throughout the night during closed hours. And that, to me, represents a significant security issue. And then finally, the last component is, of course, the aesthetic that Scott talked about. You know, it will definitely improve the aesthetic of the house from the road. And so, you know, with those things in mind, I'd ask for your, and I appreciate your comment about the arch. You know, I'm also a tall guy like you. And so what I prefer not to do is bump my head going inside the arch every time. And we are also, I know there was some pushback or some questioning, I guess I should say, on the arch being on the right-hand side. We can certainly move that to the other side of the gate if the commission thinks that's a better use of the terrain. But other than that, I, I, you know, would again, like to leave you with the security aspects of that, both the retaining wall and the front wall, as well as the height of the wall. Doesn't have to be a solid wall the way up, but we would like to extend that wall if we can at all in height. Because there's not a dog in the park that can't jump a three-foot wall. So just leave you with that and appreciate that you're helping consideration on this.
Did, did you want to identify your name for, just for
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm Jordan Croman. I'm the owner and my wife, Heather and I own the house.
Just for the record, just so we got it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else in the public? Nobody here, it looked like we, got anybody left here? Anybody online, Shelby?
Not one person online.
Okay, all right, I'm going to close the public comments, open it up to the commissioners for discussion. Commissioner Alborn, would you like to begin?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The retaining wall not only is necessary, but I believe has a timestamp on it. That's important for us to pay attention to. The engineering work has been, has been done. And that's a project that I would very much like to see approved this evening. The question of the arch and the gate and the driveway gate and the wall, I, I see as a, as a, as a separate project. It seems to have received a different level of design treatment than the retaining wall. The retaining wall has been highly engineered. But yet the, the driveway gate and its design, I know that we have some design guidelines that speak to some very simple forms. I'm not sure that what we're seeing here reflects that. This project does, the design guideline four point three talks about a staggered setback in the front, and this project surely does that. It also, four point five, talks about using a progression of spaces from the street edge. And I believe this project is also, as it was described to us when we were on site today, it appears that indeed that, that will also occur. But that four point five, it does talk about using a fence or a wall or a hedge to define that front property line. And it also says the walkway from the property line to the house should be informal in appearance. So my, my one comment would be given, of course, the applicant speaking to security as a consideration for this project. Is there a way that we could see a little bit more definitive a design for that gate, the arch and the driveway gate that definitely speaks to our design guidelines?
Commissioner Allen, any comments?
So I agree with my fellow commissioner on quite a few aspects of what she was saying. I think that there is an urgency in terms of the retaining wall and that we should move forward on that approval tonight. I am not completely sold on what has been proposed across the driveway. I do feel like, you know, we seek to have this sense of openness. And then, you know, designing without a, a wall in front of the house is the first thing to be considered. Since there is an issue of privacy, obviously this would be appealed and go to the city council and maybe overturned. So, so I'm not quite sure where to go with that one. In terms of material for gates and fences, now that we have these high fire concerns, I am a little bit more open to metal at this point if we were to move forward with some sort of gate. I, I feel like the arch is unnecessary and adds to the complexity of what we're looking at here. Still not quite sure how this is all going to fit, just from standing there and, and looking at the driveway size and, and where things would be placed. But would be happy to move forward with the retaining wall tonight.
Commissioner Locke, your comments, please.
I agree with what was just said. I am a hundred percent behind the retaining wall being approved this evening. However, I am not supportive of what's been proposed for the arch and the driveway gate. I think there needs to be a lot more detail provided. And I think they also should rethink the concept in terms of the security which was brought up. The proposal for a three-foot stone fence line is, doesn't do anything for you as far as that goes. So I think you need to rethink the whole thing and come back with another proposal on that.
Commissioner Kara Petkoff, your comments?
Yeah, on the retaining wall, yeah, these are two separate issues, right? The one is a structural thing, the other one is a design issue. And it's optional. The, the retaining wall is not optional, non-negotiable. My only concern about the retaining wall is really that there are two retaining walls on top of each other and they're very close. And when they fix the, the one below, the one that we're discussing today, they will be even closer to the other one, the, the one on top. So with the design that they are proposing now, they are going to disturb the soil. So the soil is not going to be stable. They are going to remove probably like two feet of soil. And they are going to put some gravel in it because you need to put gravel for the water to go into this perforated pipe, et cetera. So the whole thing becomes very unstable. And my concern is that the retaining wall on top is going to give, it's going to start falling. And the problem is that the house on top, if it hasn't already kind of went in that direction, it will. So the floors are probably already kind of going in this direction because the whole, the whole hill is coming down. Also, this is very close to the property line and there may be some utilities going along that. Worst-case scenario, there is a septic pipe or sewer line going behind that wall. So when, once you start digging, you, you have a problem with the sewer line. Less of a problem if it's electric or gas, but still you, you, you probably have some utilities going to the street. So 411 is important. But yeah, there, there's no other choice. They have to, they have to replace it. On the design element, the front gate, I'm not sure how the proposed arch fits with the design of the house. If you look at the house, and there's a picture of the house here, for those who don't remember what we saw today, there's a picture of the house on page L3, right? So if you look at the house behind it, it's stucco with a trolley, with this garage door, with a little bit glass on top and this single window on top. I'm not sure exactly what design is that, but I'm trying to figure out how that fits with the, with the arch and I cannot figure out how. Maybe if it was combined with a redesign of the front of the house, I would say, yeah, there is a logic in that. But just building an arch and not changing the house does not make sense to me. And you know what we think about gates, right? So not really big friends of gates. Yeah, from a design perspective, I think this gate and, and arch have to be reworked to benefit to the design of the house. And even if it's reworked, I'm not sure if we would tend to approve that. I understand the concerns about the parking kits and dogs and other things coming in. But it's just not a, for me, not enough reason to put a gate, especially one that doesn't work with the house.
Okay, your comments? All right, thank you. Evan, I have a few, few questions for you. Well, first of all, I, I Well, first of all, could the owner come back up, or the, I wanna, I wanna ask you just a couple of things, because I, I was listening to your concerns, and I wanna figure out how we can address those. And, and you wanna have security, you're across the street from this park, there's balls, there's dogs, and, and you're concerned about this, this limitation of the three-foot-high wall, and you can have a higher fence, you know, on, on the setback. Now, is that, is that wall doing any retaining?
I mean, is that, is that? There may be a retaining component, I mean, there is a small retaining wall there that kind of wraps around that front part, so we would probably replace that, but it's not a huge.
It's not, it's not a retained wall, though.
That's not the primary focus.
It's not a retained wall, there's not a, there's not an elevation change behind the wall. So, so I'm, I'm just curious why you didn't go to a higher wall that had an open design, because that's, you can go higher, which will address your concern for security, and the open design is what our residential guidelines encourage, rather than a solid wall. So I'm just...
So I, I was under the impression, and maybe I'm wrong, I'll look at Scott, but that this was not the final, the final drawings that we would submit, the final drawings, is that correct?
No.
Okay.
Well, this is, this is, this is, this is concept, you know, so we're, we're talking about design at this, at this point, and I'm just basically trying to make you aware of what you can do.
Yeah.
You know, in the code, we've got, you know, staff has said it's five feet high for a fence. I was under the impression it was four feet, but...
So, so there's two different components. The retaining wall can be approved taller within the front setback up to six feet, which, which complies. The garden wall, which is the wall along the street edge proposed to be constructed from stone, that is limited to three feet.
We're, we're certainly over to...
Is that, is that on the property?
Yes.
So, but if it's a fence?
The fence...
Fence can be higher, right?
Fence can go up to four feet.
Up to four, that's, that was my impression.
Yes.
But it's five, five feet on, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, sorry.
I'm just trying to get this clear before we, so is it five feet on gates? Because you held up five fingers when I was asking about the gate.
I apologize, six. Pillars and gates can be up to six feet.
In, in the front yard setback?
In the front, so fences, yeah, I'm looking at the table now, so I apologize, I misspoke when I said five. Fences can be four feet, garden walls can be three. Retaining walls are limited to three feet at the stuff level, can be taller, approved by the planning commission. Pillars and gates are six, arbors and trellises are seven.
Okay, all right, so, yeah, I just wanna get, get, you know, what you can do, and in the context of that, those standards, then you can address, you know, the concerns that you have with your security and, you know, and whatever design, you know, elements you want with the house. So, you know, it, it sounds like if you get away from the garden wall idea that you can go to a higher fence. You can go, you know, four-foot fence, you can have a six-foot-high gate, and you can have a seven-foot-high trellis arch. That's, those are our standards.
Yep.
So you've got, you kind of work within that.
Sure.
So that's why I was wondering if the garden wall was a retaining wall, you needed to retain, and that's why you made it out of stone. Because our guidelines on fences encourage an open design, you know, we're trying to not have a walled-off kind of community, that's what speaks about, you know, traditionally we had these informal gardens you could look into, and so that's, that's the character of our community we're trying to maintain with our, you know, with our, our guidelines. So having said that, you know, the retaining wall, that, that, you gotta do that, that's, that's a safety issue.
Right.
I'm just, that's gonna be a challenging project. I mean, I could not believe the grade change you have there, and that really presents a lot of problems, so I think kudos to your engineer and any contractor you can get and take that project on. That's gonna be a, that's gonna be one for the books. But yeah, I'm, I'm, you know, we need to approve that tonight as soon as possible so you can get working on this. But, but the, but the design of the, of the, of the fence or garden wall, the arbor, the gate, that, that's kind of a separate thing, and it seems like there's some additional work that, that needs to be done there to, to get you what you want.
Okay.
You know, so I, I would just, I would just recommend that we kind of split this up and pass the retaining wall, and then continue the, the design on the, on the, you know, along the front of the property, so, you know, being aware of what the standards are, and then design something that works, works for you. I don't, as far as design, I don't have a problem with the arch, the stone arch, I think it's fine. I think it's gonna be challenging, though, to get the amount of headroom you need under the arch to, to go through that, you know, for a person that's over six feet, because stone has to have a certain dimension to it to, you know, to, to support itself. But, but that's up to you, you know, you, you can design it, you just, you know, the standards are what they are, you design whatever, you know, you want within the standards, and then, you know, we, we review it on that, so I think that's kind of where we're heading.
I know we're not supposed to design anything, but it would look really pretty if you followed that same look, the, and pattern that you have under your front window, if you brought that forward, just saying.
Yeah, we can cer- we can certainly give direction, you know, I mean, any of the commissioners give direction for any design, and, you know, but, but kind of gets into a subjective area. The standards are really what we're trying to, to see that you, you know, you meet those standards. And then within the design, I personally am trying to stay away from subjective decisions. I think it's just, I don't, you know, I don't want to tell you what you like, and I don't want you telling me what I like.
Right, yeah, I appreciate that.
You know what I mean? That's, so, but the standards are what they are, and that's, that's, that's what, you know, you have to work within, so. So, and you've got, there's possibilities there, you can do, I think you can address what you want to do.
Okay.
So, that's kind of where we are.
Thank you.
Okay, so...
Chair, do you mind?
Just have a resolution here. Go ahead.
Do you mind if I just ask a question?
Go ahead, any comments, staff or whoever wants to make comments, go right ahead.
It, it sounds like the, the direction you're heading is to split up the action, just in your consideration, do you mind providing direction if the, the feature in the front, the, the fence wall, whatever it ends up being, and the, the gate and, and arbor, is that something you would want to return to the commission, or would you like to delegate that to staff?
I'm happy to delegate it with staff as long as it's inside, you know, meets the standards. Meets, you know, the, the code standards and the residential, you know, standards, although I do know that we have, there is some bias in the residential policies now against metal, and that's changing based upon, you know, the new wildfire situation that we have. So if staff isn't comfortable making those kind of decisions, that's, I mean, that's up to staff, that's your call.
I'm, I'm just looking for a direction and looking to understand the expectation. Typically, as a standalone application, that is something that we would do at the staff level. If the expectation is that you would see that again, I just want to make sure that that's clear and understood, or if, if you would like to re-delegate that to staff.
Do, do any other commissioners have any feelings about that?
So Evan, how would, this goes to the design of the gate, the, the driveway gate, which seems to me as proposed to be a little busy. And so if it were at staff approval level, how would you be looking at that?
So, as a standalone application, not considering the wall, we, we evaluate the project for consistency with the design guidelines. If the project is not consistent with the design guidelines, or there's conflict with the design guidelines, we bring this to the applicant's attention. If they choose to not revise the project, or they would like to pursue the project as proposed, then we refer it to the planning commission.
So if it is a proposed metal gate, metal driveway gate?
Mm-hmm.
That it does go against your design guidelines, so that would pick it back to us?
To you, yes, so as proposed, it was already to you, which is why we, staff was seeking the planning commission's direction.
If that is what ultimately is proposed, then bring it back to us.
Yes. If the project is revised to be something that is consistent, but I, again, what, what I heard from this discussion was the planning commission is open to metal. At least I heard that from one commissioner.
Yeah, I think, I think we are open to metal, but I think that there's the simplicity versus the intricacy that can occur when you're dealing with something that you can manipulate like that.
Yeah, yeah, and it must be, there must be some design connection between the house and the, and the fence and, and the arch as well. For example, if we're using metal for a fence, it has to somehow connect to the garage door, which is metal. It cannot be a different kind of metal and look completely different. Same with the, with the stone around the arch. We have stone here, right? There's a, the whole driveway is paved. It, it cannot be different types of stone or different shade of stone, because it doesn't, it doesn't create the connection. You cannot have yellow stone on the arch and gray stone on the driveway, because it creates a conflict. There's no consistency of materials.
We don't, we don't have those, those are not on our, our guidelines, those kinds of considerations. You know, we can't, we can't, we can't just make up guidelines. We have specific guidelines, and that's what we have to go by.
So we, we do have design guidelines that speak to consistency of materials.
Right, right, but that's what I'm saying, so we just, we just, you just look at it in, in the context of the guidelines. But a, a lot of, some of this gets into just taste, you know, what the applicant wants, and this, this is kind of a nondescript house, and I think if they, I mean, I don't remember anything in the guidelines that says that the, the fence has to be subordinate to the house, designed to the house. Is that, is that something that you interpret in the guidelines? I'm, I'm only bringing this up just because of, of the subjectivity issue.
Well, the, the design guidelines are subjective.
Right.
They, they aren't objective design guidelines.
But they have an intent.
Sure.
An intent is to maintain the character of the community, particularly on the residential level. The historical character of the community. But while you're looking at that, we have this resolution, and it seems to me what the, what, what, what we want to do here, what the commission wants to do is separate out the retaining wall, so...
Excuse me?
What we need to do.
I may be out of order, Chairman, but can I ask you a question?
Oh, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
So, there's a conflict. We were actually gonna come just for the wall, but we figured since we were paying for the, the presence, we'd, we'd add the, the mangate and all that sort of thing. Is it possible to break this up where we come back just for that, but then we're still proceeding with?
That's, that's, that's our intent, that's what we want to do.
Oh, okay.
I'm just looking at the resolution now.
Just because of the time.
To break out the retaining wall, and then the design of the, the arch and the garden wall would be continued for redesign.
Another time, okay.
And, and it seemed like that was what the owner wanted anyhow, because he wanted something different to provide security and so forth, so...
Chair, I think I could possibly float a, a possible motion to...
Okay, go right ahead.
To accept staff's proposed resolution with the modification to conditions of approval number one. And that would read, the new text would read, "One, authorization, approval of removal of an existing retaining wall and installation of a new wall system exceeding height limits located at Mission Street to northwest of Second Avenue in the single-family residential R1 District Park P overlay in archeological significance AS overlay district with the APN continued." So I think that might be the modification that you're looking for.
Yeah, that is, that's the only, that's the only condition that refers to the garden wall.
And that, that, as far as I can see, and Mr. Cork can help us, I think that's the only part of the resolution that refers to the garden wall. Would that be true?
I apologize, I, I think, I think I might have missed it as, as I was still reading through the design guidelines.
Oh, you're still looking.
I, I apologize, if, if you could just repeat it for me one more time.
Yes, so modifying the conditions of approval number one for authorization, essentially removing that first phrase. So we're gonna approve the design study application, DS 25126 Croman, for the removal of an existing retaining wall and installation of a new wall system, continuing to the end of that paragraph.
Yes, so it's striking...
It's striking...
Striking effectively that, that middle section.
I can, I can quote that, striking, quote, "The installation of a new three-foot-tall wall and driveway gate in the front setback as well as," end quote.
Yeah, just, just strike from, for the, for the, just put of, of a new three-foot-tall wall and driveway gate in the front yard setback.
Yes, and then I'm also gonna recommend the addition of condition 22.
Elimination of condition 22.
The addition of 22, which is on the, the screen.
And perhaps are we able to add to the motion the permission to edit out all references to the garden wall, because there are some in the beginning, in the first paragraph as well.
Yes, yes, we, we can do that throughout.
I will second that motion.
Okay, good job on that motion. Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Albon?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kara Petkoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
And Chair LaPage.
Yes, motion is carried. And Evan, you don't, you don't need to, you know, answer that question about, because you'll, you'll be handling that during the review of the other, so there'll be plenty of time for that, but I appreciate you taking a look. Okay, that brings us to...
Can I just say that in the guidelines, it actually says, "Continue the pattern of fences, walls, and landscaping from other properties nearby, or on other properties nearby in respect to any existing patterns on nearby properties." So it talks about height, materials, vegetation, and visibility into the site, and, and there's also a reference to accommodate compatible designs for fences and walls if, if you are going to go in that direction, because ultimately, most of the concepts that we see were asking that, you know, we want this openness, and, and we aren't necessarily saying that we want a walled-off appearance. And so for me, in reading through these guidelines, it seems like there should be some consistency in materials or in, in the way that we approach the design of, of any of the fences and walls and, and gates.
Well, I'm sure it deserves a, a more comprehensive discussion. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the last item on the public hearing, item number seven. This is a use permit, 25024, for Small Perfumes LLC. It's a consideration of use permit for establishment of a new cosmetic store located on Lincoln Street to Southwest Ocean Avenue. Have the staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners. Yes, we're here to discuss a use permit for a cosmetic store on Lincoln, just behind One moment.
Please.
Please, sorry, yes, thank you. All the pleasantries. There we go. Lincoln, two Southwest Ocean, in Unit A. You can see I've drawn an arrow to it, it's in the La Rambla Building. Previously, it was She, which was a clothing retailer. Their proposed use is perfumes by the sea, which would be roughly 50% perfume sales, approximately 40% jewelry sales, and 10% clothing. It's currently Somali, was, as you've seen from the use permit, that's the name of the company that they operate. Somali, they initially desired to have the cosmetic store, the perfume shop, that's what their, their business model is, but they didn't want to wait for the time, they, they liked the space, and they wanted to start there, so they opened up the store as a clothing and jewelry retail store, and then applied for their use permit to be a cosmetic store. So this use permit would accommodate for that change, and they discovered that while operating the clothing and jewelry store, that they enjoyed that business model and wanted to continue partial use of that. So this use permit would be for the cosmetic store, and then for having multiple ancillary uses, and then for having an ancillary use that's more than 10% of the business. So they're just kind of getting all three done at once. Slide. Hey, is it working? Hey, there we go. So here's a rough floor plan. Checkouts at the back of the building, there's a clothing rack in there, there'll be some jewelry stands and perfumes, a series of counters that display all their merchandise, and they'd be operating, they usually operate, they said, around 10 to 4, 10 to 5, but wanted to allow for accommodation. but wanted to allow for accommodation for earlier times slash slightly later times if business was doing better or at different times of the year. So the proposed use permit, a use permit is required for a cosmetic store. It's required to have multiple ancillary uses and it's required if any of your ancillary uses are going to be more than 10% of the primary use, which they're going for all three of those. They have some specific conditions for use permits. So here's the general use permit findings. It's not in conflict with the general plan, meets the zoning codes. It won't have an incremental deleterious effect on the city. It won't put excess demand on public service. The whole list is here. We've reviewed them and don't believe that this location would cause any issues to the city and meets all required standards, guidelines, code and follows the general plan. Impatient, sorry. I'm clicking too much. Specifically, commercial use permit findings are these three here, allowing a balance of uses, adequate ingress and egress and automobile and delivery traffic. So they wouldn't be having a lot of deliveries. Most of the merchandise is in the store and they don't get regular deliveries and what they would get, I believe I've, I've actually, because it's right behind City Hall, I pass it all the time. I've seen them bring some stuff in just from their own personal vehicle. So it's not going to generate a lot of traffic. It has ingress and egress from what I understand based off building code, but that would be something that I'd review with the building officials just to confirm. And it allows for a mix of uses. We have plenty of retail jewelry in town. We don't have too many cosmetic stores, but it is something that we have created the need for a use permit due to some previous cosmetic stores, which I'll address at a later slide, I believe. And then there's some findings for ancillary uses, that they're compatible with the primary use. They've been considered as a whole and they contribute to the commercial district's character. I believe they're all compatible together. It's basically a one-stop shop for a night out in Carmel. You get your perfume, your earrings and your dress and you're good to go, you know? So it seems, it, it all seems a piece with each other and it doesn't seem incongruous. And I believe I must have skipped a slide earlier because I had one that talked about cosmetic stores. There we go. It's back, it's second slide. So in 2017, the city required cosmetic stores get a use permit because there was numerous code compliance cases based off the existing cosmetic stores in towns that had some aggressive sales tactics and they were going into the sidewalk and trying to pull people in or give them samples. And this was something that we received a lot of complaints about. So that's why they need use permits to begin with. So they're required and it's conditioned, it's in the code and it's also conditioned as part of the use permit. They must may stay inside the enclosed business space and not be going out into the public right-of-way for sales, which I've talked to the owner about and they have no problems with that. They, they're, I've talked to them a little bit and I've actually seen them at the Monterey Farmers Market. They have a stand. They, they're just a young couple that are selling perfume and do this for a living and seem very passionate about what they do. So with all of that, it meets all of the required findings. I think it fits in with the character of Carmel and the commercial district. All the uses work together seemingly appropriately and I recommend approving the use permit. If you have any questions.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Albor?
Thank you, Jake. And thank you, Chair. Is it, is it common to have a retail shop in Carmel that's not a food shop that is open at 8:00 AM? Right, their, their hours were listed as from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Yes.
Do we have any guidelines for that? I understand sometimes a restaurant, right, might be open early for breakfast, but 8:00 AM just seems early to me.
I believe there are some, but I don't have the numbers in front of me. I was looking at the commercial section of the code and I believe there's actually even more wiggle room for the allowed business hours in the commercial district. And this honestly, it was just me trying to accommodate them because they said they're usually open 10 to four. So it's not a big hours, but I said, you know, you have a little more wiggle room. I can expand it if you want. So we went with this just, honestly, it's more of an arbitrary number just to give them wiggle room for the future if there was some time that it was deemed appropriate. But if you have concerns about that, we could certainly shrink the hours. Yeah, no problem.
Do you have a question? You look like you have a comment. Oh, you want to wait? Okay. You're ready to go on those comments. I wanted to ask a question.
Questions only, no comments.
So Jake, what is happening with the space on the other side, the existing commercial space one? What is this on the opposite side of the building?
Over here in the Lower Rambla Building.
On the left side?
Yeah, that was, it was a bridal store, but they, they just left and I'm pretty sure I got a business license application for another business and it is eluding me currently what it is, but it's, it's. Oh, that, that might be, no, that's across the way. Yeah, that's across the way. I, it's, it's, I can't think of it off the top of my head, but I believe it's a retail store that's going in place there. I was just looking at the business license, too. I, I, I'm not sure, but it's not something that I think would be incompatible with the, this location.
Yeah. And on top, what, what is happening with the floor?
I believe that's mother, and there's also another commercials. There's two apartments and I think there's a commercial space up there, Mother Hearth or something. Maybe that's in the back. I can't remember, but yeah, it's, I haven't received any, any comments from anyone in the public regarding this proposed cosmetic store. There's, and there's children's and then there's the tobacco shop next to that, which I was curious, I've walked by to see if, what the, any public nuisance. I was curious about just overwhelming smell or anything like that. Didn't smell anything. The only thing you can smell walking by there is tobacco, if anything, from the pipe in tobacco store. Yeah.
Probably been there forever.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Any more questions for staff? All right. Is the applicant here or? They're not here? Okay. Any members of the public? Make any comments? Anybody online? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing and open it up to the Commissioners. All right, you guys.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to tell you guys, I actually stopped into the shop when it was, as it was open and met Samar and very, very lovely people. And I think that they are, it will be a nice addition to the community. The, as I understand it, the perfumes that they're selling, some of them are actually created by them and, and so that it's very specific to our area. And, and they had just some beautiful things in there. So I think this is going to be a great addition to town and I support it 100%.
Commissioner Allen?
I'm with Commissioner Locke. I think this sounds great.
Mr. Albor?
Oh, let's, let's make this happen for them.
Mr. Karapetkov?
It, it sounds good. It sounds good, the whole idea. I just wanted to make sure that there are no conflicts with other businesses in the, in the building. It doesn't seem to be a problem and they seem to meet all the requirements, including having a toilet in there in the building. So we're, we're fine with that. Yeah, doesn't, doesn't, I don't see any, any real problems with that.
Okay.
Just quick, Shelby gave you the update. The, the business is going into space directly across the hall from them at the La Rambla Building will be an art gallery.
Art gallery?
Yeah.
Okay, that's.
Okay. Yeah, the, the, just to kind of follow up on the hours, usually in the past, our concerns about hours have been closing time because of the impacts on the residences which are downtown. And this, this one apparently has a residence above it. So earlier is usually not the issue. It's usually the closing that we've, we've been, we've had discussions about in the past. And most of the time, that's been in the context of restaurants. So I just thought I'd make that comment, but yeah, this, this staff's done a great job of their presentation. So I have an.
Are the hours specified somewhere in the?
Must be in the resolution here.
That's what I'm looking at.
I get that.
I believe it's one of the conditions has the hours of operations. If it doesn't, then I will make sure to add that as.
Well, and quite frankly, I don't know that you'd want to, okay, permitted hours of operation, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, seven days a week. Okay, that's fine. I move approval of staff's recommendation.
I second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Albor?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Karapetkov?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
And Chair LaPage?
Yes. Motion is carried. Thank you, everyone. Okay, that concludes the public hearings and we're going to tee up for the director's report.
Thank you. Give me that mic, Jake. Okay, so just a short list. I first wanted to start off with kudos on the admin sign, side and Brandon for the lovely AV equipment and upgrades. We're still working out the bugs, but you know, we were able to continue. Yes, it's definitely a lot brighter. I think it, it feels that way.
Yeah, I can hear myself a lot better, too. Everything's really.
Yeah.
It's nice and tweaked up.
Odds, the contract with the consultant that will be going before the city council in September. The state HCD's friendly review of the housing element amendment draft is near completion. So you should be receiving any feedback soon. The future agenda items for both planning commission or, for planning commission would be the ADU ordinance. I believe we're still working on a special date, but are really targeting to try to get that done sooner than later. For the city council, the Millsak contract policy will be brought forward. Currently, we are not processing any Millsak contracts, so it's reviving the policy. I believe that's targeted for September as well. The appeal on the JB Pastore project is set for August 4th. There will be a tour both on the afternoon of the first and on the fourth prior to the city council meeting. We are starting assistant planner and associate planner interviews within the next couple of weeks. So if we are successful, we, community planning and building will be fully staffed. Environmental, environmental compliance, they are also working on a copper gutter policy document. So once that gets finalized, we can bring that back forward to the planning commission. And one of the discussions that I had with Chair LaPage is in order to help organize tasks and, you know, provide a way for both planning commission and staff to kind of stay on top of the things that we want to do and track, I will be developing a planning commission referral list and it'll just be like a living document. And, you know, if you hear concerns from residents or you have concerns yourself with how things are being processed or, you know, maybe efficient ways to do things, we can add those to the list and then just keep working on that. And that's all I have.
I have a question. What is the like timeline or vision for the guidelines?
The objective design standards or the design traditions, the residential design guidelines?
The design guidelines that have been.
The design traditions.
Oh, traditions?
Yeah, revisions, yeah.
So I, I do not believe we have a, a target date. I know we want to have that done soon.
And why? Why no target date? Like, because we started off strong and we like paid a consultant and the whole thing and then?
And then started over.
What happened? I don't, I don't even understand.
So right now, we, the, the component that we are working on is finding, we call them hero homes in the village, where we would have a policy and then a graphic that would represent like what this policy is trying to achieve. So it's narrowing down which photos we want to use. That's kind of our next step. And I believe after that, then we're going to put everything back together with the policy language and then that draft should be hopefully final. Before the end of the year?
Oh, really?
Okay, that, that's a good answer.
It's a deadline.
All right, hold her, hold her to it.
Yeah. I will put that on the referral list.
Put that on your referral list.
Put it at the top.
And I, I have something else for your referral list, possibly.
Awesome. Okay.
The, and this relates to the new fire maps and the new guidance from the state and the state fire marshal, specifically about the, the zero zone or zone zero and a discussion about considering an urgency ordinance so that the planning commission, if we see someone that wants to put stone next to their foundation instead of wood chips, we can say, yes, you can do that. And similar types of recommendations for fire hardening. I understand most recently, we don't have specific recommendations yet coming down from the state fire marshal's office. Even so, is there something that we can do here at the city level to be a little bit more proactive and how might we do that?
We, we do have defensible measures, you know, that are, that have come out from the state, so you can, you can look at that. And, and, and the, it's my understanding they've hired, I think, five inspectors?
Yes.
And they're doing, they're doing, they're doing inspections. They're not writing citations. They're taking a, a more soft-handed, soft approach initially, just kind of going into informing people about things they could do. And if they see something that's a problem, they're just making them aware of it. So that's kind of where they're starting. But they do, they have inspectors now and they're making inspections, so.
Well, that's good. But, but even, even if what the, the result would be some guidelines for the planning commission so that we have an understanding of the zero zone or other zones and what we ought to be keeping an eye out for.
Contradictions that we've got right now.
Et cetera.
Right.
Because right now, our design guidelines are 24 years old.
Right, and there's a lot, a lot of conflicts in them.
Yes, and I know also the, the draft design guidelines, I'm glad you're looking for hero homes because some of our illustrations are from prior to our more recent understanding of the fire maps.
Has, has the, has a change in the wildfire district designation, has that created some challenges for redoing the guidelines?
Not yet. Haven't seen that yet.
Not yet.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think it's more of an issue with the site coverage and, and how, how to achieve balance with the, the local coastal program because that's, that's like an inherent part.
Right, okay. Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of talk about natural materials, though, and things like that and wood.
I have a question.
Which we're going to have challenges with.
Where, where are we with the Hofstra's house? Have they pulled permits? Are they about to start or? Because we approved them about more than a year ago.
They, I believe they have not yet applied for the building permit. I know they were working with a soils engineer and had reached out to our building official and he had some recommendations as far as to like areas to test, especially closer to the, the right-of-way, the front of the hotel. But as far as I know, I, I cannot recall that has been applied for yet.
And the pit? Do we have any updates on that?
The demolition permit has been applied for. The applicant has resubmitted based on comments that were given. So that should be ready to go. I know that they are trying to coordinate with the Carmel Foundation and Carmel Art Association. Both of those properties need access to, to improve their foundations. So they're trying to, to make sure it's coordinated. And I believe they, they have submitted for the actual construction of the, of the building. But that's still in, in plan check and I think that has ways to go.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Okay, any more questions for the director? All right, thank you. We are adjourned. Our next meeting is August 13th. Thank you, everyone.